Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 12th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye, with the exception of Page 2 of 7.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
I don't think there were any.
I hope there were any.
Hold on, sir.
Okay.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I have exceptions to 1407, 08, 10, 11, 12, and 1406.
I'm sorry, 1406?
Yep.
Okay, what are they?
1406 is a $2,800 Christmas wreath. 1407 through 12 is $13,356 for the Justice Center grand opening party.
Any further discussion?
None here.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot where we left off with it.
Nothing, just call the roll call.
Okay. Can we have a call on that then?
Who was in move, I think?
You were. I'm sorry, I think it was Ms. Blair.
It was.
I think I was in move. And I will, I will vote aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with the noted exceptions.
Okay, thank you. Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions is indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, at this time I would like to request a brief executive session at the conclusion of our agenda items to discuss potential new hires.
Under Commissioners, rename the Lorraine County Justice Center in honor of Judge John A. Howard.
So moved.
Motion died due to lack of second. Number 11, discuss the usage of the Lorraine County Courthouse and what offices will be located in the building.
Okay, we were going to put adult probation. I think, well, I know there's a resolution to put adult probation and the lab in there. And it's been my position that the courthouse is a historical center. It's a centerpiece, and I believe that that just takes away from it. And I'd like to discuss using the courthouse as a historical museum.
Can you make it out of the motion, or?
Good idea.
All right, here. Are you making a motion on the agenda item?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Can I get a second? So we're going to use it, keep it as the... I think that once you move something in there, it's going to stay there, it's a permanent thing. And it's a shame to use that courthouse for a lab and probation.
Do they could, did that motion just die for lack of second?
I believe so. Apparently it did.
So we're on number 12.
Motion has died due to lack of second.
We're not, we're not familiar with your procedures. So I mean, you went through a item. Now, the last time I was here, there were some items about some sewerage or whatnot, and folks got a chance to speak about the item that was on the agenda. And this John A. Howard item, we know, what are the, what are the procedures for those who are coming here to support that?
Under audience participation at the end of the agenda. It will be public comment, item I.
Okay, now, the issue I have with that is the last time I was here, when you had the items about the sewerage, people spoke on that item before you did any consort of motions.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
You can speak to that issue also under public comment. You've been informed by the President of the Board to the procedure. Madam Clerk, please move on.
Item number 12, approve and enter into an agreement with Clark &amp; Post Architects Incorporated, Lorraine, Ohio, in the amount of $12,600 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $2,500 to perform architectural services for alterations to the Lorraine County Courthouse for adult probation and the forensics laboratory. This will be paid from account number 40004-0201-450124, which is the Justice Center professional services and was the lowest proposal received.
Commissioners, I'd like to ask that we hold this until next week. I let this go by rather quick, and I haven't had a chance to review the bids myself, and I should have held it up before it got to the agenda. It was my fault, and I'm asking for an additional week so I can take a look at the matter.
Again, I am sticking with what I said before, my position with that courthouse, because I believe that spending any kind of money for an architect to go in there and do that work for the probation department and the lab is a waste of money, because in the future, if you want to do anything else with the building, you're going to pay some more money to place these people somewhere else. And I think this is just going to be a waste of money. And not only that, but it's degrading the building.
Madam Clerk, number 13, please.
Number 13, grant an expedited one annexation petition for approximately 2.0232 acres of land in the township of Eaton to the city of Alariah, Ohio. Said territory is known as Bender Road. Attorney John L. Keyes Walker, agent for petitioners.
Mr. Ennis? Have we complied with all the things required of us in this instance?
If I may, Commissioner, this is a little bit different proceeding. This is what's called an expedited one procedure, which means that it's just submitted, and the Commissioners have to act on it at the next regular meeting. There is no provision for having a public hearing as before. You just check through and see if everything has been complied with. There is one questionable thing about it. There is, there is a gap in the new annexation law. I don't think it really has a provision that provides for the annexation of a road all by itself. And there is some ambiguous language in there as to technically who must make the petition. I have discussed it with Attorney John Keyes Walker, Al Schrader, the fellow from the Commissioners Association who was involved in the drafting of the language. And everybody is a little bit unclear, but we have come to the conclusion that we believe what is being done here is, in our opinion, what we feel is the correct procedure. But I want you all to be aware of that's, that's nothing. We're basing on any specific language in the statute or any court decisions. It's just the kind of consensus from, of opinions from that group of attorneys. So based on that consensus, yes, Commissioner, I believe that the petition is in compliance with the law.
Thank you. There is another issue before us, and I think that the annexation of Bender Road was contingent, that was contingent upon Bender Road, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. This was part of the previous annexation, and looking at it with 2020, we wanted that to proceed because it had been delayed so many times. Probably, in the future, if that's done, we should probably just go ahead and continue it and amend the petition and do it that way than have this separate situation. Yes, it was tied into that previous annexation.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions?
Yeah, Jerry, are you talking about the maintenance of the road? Who's going to maintain it?
Right, the town, one of the things that the township indicated is, is oftentimes they will have all these properties annexed, and then they end up having to take care of a road or a street where they virtually have no citizens living on. So as a condition of that previous annexation, they had asked that the city take over this road. But that, that came at the conclusion of all the rounds of bargaining that we had done, and they didn't want to have to go back and start all over on that thing. So we, at that point, said, we'll do, we'll just do a second annexation. Then after that, and then rereading the law, we came to this realization that there really is this gap as far as just annexing a road. So again, all I can say is the consensus of all those attorneys is that we're doing it correctly at this point. Since all the parties agree on that, I don't anticipate there'll be a problem.
Municipality and the townships are both in agreement? And the people realize that once we approve this, they have no right to appeal?
Right.
And everybody's been notified, the neighbors, cross street, and everything?
I'll move for adoption of item number 13.
No second.
Jerry, they realize that that land can't be removed from the township. The municipality knows this.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Number 14, approve a change order, number 2, to the GQ Contracting Company, Wickliffe, Ohio, in the amount of $78,000 for the Lorraine County Justice Center to be paid from account number 40004-0201-491501, which is the Q Construction account. This change order increases GQ's labor allowance according to specification section 01210, paragraph 104B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Community Development, number 15, approve the semi-annual revolving loan fund report for the period of January 1st, 2004, through June 30th, 2004, as submitted by the Lorraine County Community Development Department.
Mr. Twining, did you want to comment on this?
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, the CIC for the county met. Excuse me. We have the January to June semi-annual report that is due on our revolving loan fund, which is with the trust account. And the CIC is recommending approval of the report that is due in Columbus on August 15th. If we need an extension, we can grant one. Basically, we have, or we are reporting an available cash balance in that revolving loan fund of $412,828.63. That's as of June 30th, when the report is being filed. If you remember, we also have a commitment for JBC of $86,000. That check has not been written at the point of this report. We also are drawing down salary reimbursement of roughly $15,000. And so that the Commissioners in the public know, we are working on some other proposals right now. So we feel that from a practical standpoint, with applications in hand, we really have a working balance of about $231,000.
So we're spending $200,000?
Yes.
Good. Ron, I have a question. What are we doing about delinquent and the default?
That's a good question. The delinquent, let me get over to that so that I can report. The delinquent was delinquent by over 30 days at the time of June. That has, a letter's been gone, or has been sent, and they have, as of this week, brought themselves back up to par, although on June 30th, they were delinquent. They are current now. So that's been resolved. And the default is the Wolf Envelope Company. And if you remember, the Prosecutor's Office assisted us by going to court, and we have a judgment from the court. That may not be the proper term, but we have an entry in the court system where the three property owners, we've gone back against their personal guarantees, and they are current from, not the company, the company's out of business, but the three individuals that signed the personal guarantees are current, and that we are receiving the money that the court said. So that's all up to date and moving nicely.
So should the state be notified in this report?
The state is aware of it, but they said that technically, they have written this off as a default. Remember, the money doesn't go back to the state, it stays with our trust. They're aware that we're still collecting, and that it's by the court's entry. The state has written that default off, but we're able to continue to collect the money and keep it in our revolving loan fund. So while it's showing up as a default here, that's really a procedure for the State Department of Development and HUD. They're aware fully, and it's always highlighted in our cover letter, what's happening with the one default. And we will also identify to them, and they're aware of, what's happening with the one that's late.
Just so they're notified.
Sure.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Sure.
Any further questions or comments? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Aye. And Mrs. Facy?
Aye.
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, number 16, approve and enter into an independent services contract, psychological services agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas, Domestic Relations, Juvenile Division, with Dr. Deborah Kuriski. This contract is effective September 1st, 2004, through August 31st, 2005. With a 30-day cancellation clause, county shall pay $49.61 per hour in biweekly increments, and the court will reimburse any out-of-pocket expenses related to seminar or training admission that the court requests the contractor to attend.
So moved. Second.
Please note that there is memorandum of understanding that should be attached to the agreement and included in the journal. And that is so that the Common Pleas Court judges can also use the service. And it's been signed by the judges and Dr. Kuriski. I'm going to give you a copy of it.
Any further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Engineer, number 17, award contract to the Shelley Company, Twinsburg, Ohio, in the amount of $822,180.55 for the resurfacing of East River Road, Chestnut Ridge Road. Three bids were received on August 3rd, this being the most responsive. Issue a notice to proceed letter on or before June 6th of 2005, and to complete work on or before August 31st, 2005, and authorize county administrator to notify county auditor to release retainage at said completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator?
I rebriefed this morning, Commissioners, as I see we have people waiting to speak. I'll remind you of my request for the executive session. And just a few minutes ago, I passed you a spreadsheet. On, as, as an ongoing matter out of my office, I'm continuing to try to update you on the closing out of the Justice Center Phase 3 project. The information I presented to you here gives you a listing of all the local participation that we were able to achieve on the Justice Center. As a refresher, it was one of the Board's stated goals to try to spend as much money here in Lorraine County while doing this project to stimulate our own economy and then have the churning effect of those dollars spent here. I'm pleased to inform you that out of all the brick and mortar contracts and equipment contracts that we let, $8170, roughly $8173,000 was able to be spent on local vendors and businesses here in Lorraine County. It's, in my mind, that's quite an achievement. And it speaks to the process that the Board adopted by requiring the primes to have mandatory local content percentages within their contract. We've had a, you know, we had a low of $171 to one vendor to a, to a high of $780,000 to another vendor. Businesses here employing people here, spending their money here, churning it in our economy, and creating opportunity for Lorraine County residents. And I want to applaud you for pursuing this program at the onset of the Justice Center, and you can see how successful it was with this report.
And we've got all domestic steel in there, too.
Yes, we do, Commissioner. Again, I know there's people waiting to speak, so I'll, I'll move on to the prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Ennis, county prosecutor?
I have a brief update on the pending litigation matter that I'd like to take up with the Commissioners in executive session. Should be very brief.
Commissioners' report.
I have nothing today.
Commissioner Moore?
None.
I just want to let anybody who's interested know that the 2003 annual updated Black River Remedial Action Plan is due, has been put forth. There's some real interesting things in here. If any of you would like a copy of it, I can get it for you. This is the one and only. But it tells a little bit about the health of our river, which goes to the health of the drinking water that we bring back. That's it.
Okay. Any old business for today?
None.
I have none.
None here, guys?
Any new business?
None.
None here.
I have a couple items I wanted to just read off. Number one, receipt, receipt of an annexation petition for 0.8072 acres from Wellington Township to the village of Wellington, Ohio, James M. Taylor Agent. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 14th, 2004, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' public hearing room. And the second item is that on August 18th, 2004, this is the deadline for all county elected officials, cities, townships, and villages to submit their time capsule materials to the Commissioners' office at 226 Middle Avenue, Alariah, Ohio.
Can I speak to that issue for a brief moment?
Sure.
Hopefully, all the communities out there will participate in this. What we're doing is similar to what we did with the bell casting, trying to get participation from each political subdivision within Lorraine County. So if you know, and I know you do, folks out in those communities, please remind them that this is a, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to place something. And they've been given the size and descriptions and everything so that everybody has an opportunity to have something that they believe is significant placed into these time capsules. But we don't have everything back yet. And if you could urge some of the folks that you know to make sure that they do that, I would be very appreciative to the Board.
Could we give it another couple of days? Because we'll see most of these people at the fair.
Fair week starts the 23rd.
I was looking for my assistant who is coordinating this. Sandra?
She's over here.
Well, I know that. Ms. Facy's question was, can we give them some additional time on receiving their materials? Or are we pressing some schedules here?
We would be pressing, but we will try our best to accommodate everyone.
Right, because I'm thinking, most of these people will be at the fair, township trustees and other individuals, and we'll be able to remind them.
Wait a minute, we're sealing it for them? That was the reason for the deadline.
Okay, and the public should know, too, that the time capsule will be opened 25 years from now, and then the second one will be open 50 years from now.
Hundred, or the 50 or hundred?
It was 25 and 50, sir.
Oh, was it?
Well, it was felt that there probably would be some people around in 50 years that participated in the project. We didn't think there would be too many around a hundred, so. We, we thought it may be nice to, you know, try to have people still available. The, the, but what Sandy said was, we're not going to seal the time capsule. We're sealing the materials to be placed in. Is that correct, Sandy?
We're doing both, but we're sealing it for the township and the general.
And these vacuum bags and so forth?
Right, and all of that. Yeah, so don't worry about being contacted.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board correspondents?
I'm busy reading, be waved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
Mr. Fred Wright.
Hey, Jim, when do you need our stuff?
When I said to Mr. Cordez, I wasn't clear on the decision. That's why I asked the question.
I, I knew Fred, and I just wanted to wait to the, to the end to answer it, and I appreciate it. And if I was a little rough, I didn't mean to be.
No problem, I just didn't understand.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Just want to be fair and respectful.
Yes, sir.
As you know, I've been one of the people who have been leading a group of community citizens in the area of trying to get the late Judge John A. Howard's name connected to the Lorraine County Justice Center. And I felt, I feel very strongly about this because from what I could see, and I've only been here a couple of years, that Judge John A. Howard was a star within the community of Alariah, in the county of Lorraine, in the state of Ohio. And, and in sort of a comparison, the building we stand in today is named after Mr. J. Grant Keyes, I believe, whose main work, I understand, was here in Alariah, although he did some other things in the county and the state. So, you know, for me, when I look at the accomplishments of Judge Howard compared to the accomplishments of Keyes, they're very similar in nature. And Keyes, at this current time, has this building, which is a county building, connected to his name. And to me, the only, the only difference in Judge Howard and J. Grant Keyes is their ethnic racial background. So I don't, I, you know, I'm not sure what the issue is in connecting Judge Howard's name to the Lorraine County Justice Center. But I think that should be given some consideration. I also want to thank the Commissioners for responding to the letters that were sent to you. It took a little while, but you did respond, so I do appreciate that. I just, and also putting the item on the agenda. I think Judge Howard commanded at least that much respect to put the item on the agenda, so we do appreciate that. I just want to also quote a great man by the name of Martin Luther King Jr. And Martin Luther King Jr. said that it's always easy to... "It's always easy to do things and make decisions that are easy, that are popular, that are comfortable. But the time is right to always do what's right and what might not be popular and what might not be something that's comfortable to do." And whenever you're in a decision-making position, as the Commissioners are, there are times you have to do things that might not be popular and might not be things that some people consider to be comfortable. But it's the right thing to do. And in this case, connecting Judge John A. Howard's name to the Lorain County Justice Center is the right thing to do. So, years from now, years from now, when people consider naming something after Blair, Moore, or Basie, and even Cordez, people will be fighting to have that done because they will appreciate the things you've done in this county. So I'd like for you to take that in consideration. We have a group of people out here who are really committed to this cause. And I know although you did not second the motion today, and I wasn't clear on the procedure, I hope that you would take some sort of consideration in the future on how this matters dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Madam Chair? I would like to suggest something. Sir, can you come back up here? I want to give you a copy of a picture that I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this is just a plaque. You know, when I went to Arizona, I saw this around a building there. And I thought, this would be perfect for the Justice Center. And I'm sure my colleague Dave's already said that he would agree with this. And I'm sure Commissioner Blair would. But what happened here is, these are donated by family members and friends of people that should be remembered. And I believe we have a lot of people in Lorain County that go way back in history that should be remembered, just as Judge Howard should be. And I think that this would be a perfect thing to put around the Justice Center, the old courthouse. And there's a little tree that's planted behind here. And as you can see, this is a, you can see it better here. But it's like, you know, they have marble or some type of stone around it, and that's embedded in another stone. But I would really like to see this, and I would even contribute to something like this for Judge Howard.
Well, I think that's very nice now. I'm advocating on behalf of the committee and definitely Mrs. Howard. Now, I know Mrs. Howard really wants to see Judge Howard's name on the building. You know, I'm not sure where we were going in negotiating on how we recognize Judge Howard. But I'm acceptable to something like this. But still, as I said, Mrs. Howard, you know, I'm really being an advocate for her and for the committee.
I understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Martha Pie, good morning, Martha.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. And thank God that I'm able to be here to speak on this very prestigious issue. And I would feel really remiss if I didn't say something because this is something that I don't think we just sit back and not say anything and not bring our concern to the surface and let the Commissioners know that we are very serious about this. And this is just, this is for the county and for all of us. And when I read the Journal editorial Saturday, I was very impressed with what they said. They were supporting this issue. And the committee that came forward to bring this to the Commissioner because Judge Howard was born and raised in Elyria and was a star athlete and served as a practicing lawyer, a city prosecutor, chief county probate officer. In nineteen eighty-one, he became the first African-American lawyer to head the Ohio State Bar Association. He became Lorain County's first African-American judge in nineteen eighty-five and founder and the first president of the Elyria NAACP chapter. Judge Howard remained a role model who is admirable, positive, and pioneering in the legal field and in daily life. We all will be inspired naming, naming, naming the Justice Center after a person that showed dignity, compassion, and fairness in the legal field for all people. I'm asking Mr. Moore, Mrs. Blair, and Mrs. Basie to please give this issue some reconsideration because Judge Howard really deserved this recognition. And the county would be very pleased to know that you would do this and do the thing that is right because this is American and it's for justice for all. And this is not just representative black African-American people. It's for all people. So I'm asking you, please, to reconsider this and on this issue. I appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else who wishes to address the Board?
Good morning to the Lorain County Board Commissioners. My name is Reverend Curtis Daniel.
Good morning, Martha.
The pastor of the Macedonia Church of God in Christ here in the City of Elyria. The church has been existing for at least sixty-four years in this community. And I come aboard here about at least six years ago as pastor in this city and serve also as the chaplain for the Elyria Police Department. I'm standing today in reference to this opportunity of John, of the late Judge John Howard. Met him just shortly before his passing and coming here. But he is very, I have some family members, even my wife, is very close to his wife. And I was just asked to come today, and I wanted to come to say a few words, at least, that we could, that the Board would reconsider for John Howard, for his name to be a monument placed in the new Justice Center here in the City of Elyria. And the word of the Lord teaches us that he that is the greatest among you, let him be the servant. And John Howard, from best of my estimation, and looking at his background and his history and the legacy that he have laid here in the City of Elyria, he have served and served well. And I feel he certainly should be commended for that, and we should remember his legacy. And I would ask for the Commission to reconsider that his name be placed as a monument of the new Justice Center in Elyria. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board? Good morning, Gladys.
Good morning. Hope I don't burst into tears. I've become such a crabby recently. By what, all the people that have been approaching me and even long distance, things they say in honoring the late Judge Howard. And things I had no idea that he had been doing to the extent that he had been doing them. But I would like to speak today on, in detail, on a few things. Now, to me, the whole system, everything, is concerning making and affecting the lives of everybody here. And certainly, Judge Howard's contributions have been, I can't think of anybody else in the county. First, I'm going to speak from his position in these, in three areas that distinguishes him from everybody else. And then I'm going to speak to you as to him being our local Martin Luther King. He didn't go to that march on Washington. His broken foot was bothering him. But I did. And I walked every inch of that march and stood behind Dr. Martin Luther King when he gave that now famous speech. Because I stood there and I heard some speeches from Bayard Rustin and some others that were just as dynamic. But Martin Luther King got killed, so therefore, he's a martyr. But I had borrowed a camera from Loomis' camera, Loomis' camera, because he said his was better than mine, because he knew I was going there. And I stood there on that podium with Adam Clayton Powell, the Governor Williams from Michigan, and several other dignitaries. And I faced outward like Dr. King did, looking out on that reflecting pool over to the Washington Monument where all the people were sitting with their feet to cool their feet in the pool. And I got up there because I wanted the pictures of this historic event. Anyway, I'll leave that go right there. Now, John Howard didn't make that march. He, like Dr. King, almost was lynched just from trying to catch the bus in the south to come home from college. Some black soldiers saved his life then. Now, I'm going to go to the three things I started out with. I'm just jumping all over the place because I'm nervous. The first thing I want to do is to correct the article that I read in the newspaper where it says, "Judge Howard was appointed to the President of the Bar for the State of Ohio." He was not appointed. He was elected by seventeen thousand lawyers in this state, from corner to corner of this state. This area, this county, has never had a bar president, black nor white. John is the only one from this area ever to be elected to that prestigious position. And I wanted to correct that. Appointed, uh-uh. He worked for it. He had been everything in that State Bar Association before he was asked to run. Now, unless you, one is knowledgeable about its functions, you can't justly evaluate the importance of the Ohio State Bar Association to the justice system. Now, those, if there are any lawyers in here, they definitely know. But if you're not a lawyer, I was his wife. I was there all the time. I know the whole system. And that's why it bothers me when they say he's appointed because that was a job. You take going to all eighteen districts in the state and governing and being at the head of the helm for eight state bar presidents' conferences. And when it gets to the national, then you have speakers and people that belong, like the President of the United States. I mean, this is an important prestigious position to hold. He's the only one that's ever been from here. That puts him head and shoulders in that area above anyone else. Now... And another thing, the chief probation officer for Lorain County for eighteen years. The then Common Pleas Judge Pensura said he didn't know how they could have made it without John Howard as he had a ninety percent success rate with first-time offenders. Ninety percent. Judge, Common Pleas Judge Kelly said that there are very few repeaters among first-time offenders and that John Howard must have majored in psychology also. And what does this mean? That means that for eighteen years, John Howard saved the county some of the taxpayers' money because they didn't have to be supporting the criminals. And it helped Lorain County to be a safer place in which to live. Now, who else has that record in this county? This all has to do with the judicial system. And number three, Mr. Kevin Martin is the president administrator of the EMH Regional Medical Care System. But Judge Howard was on the Elyria Memorial Hospital Board of Directors dating back to when Chauncey Smythe. I don't know if anyone in here is old enough to remember Chauncey Smythe.
Yes.
Excuse, excuse. But there was only the original building and the Gates Building. There have been several expansions and new additions to make the EMH Regional Healthcare System what it is today, which includes Amherst Hospital for Orthopedic and Specialty Service in Amherst and the EMH Health Campus on Detroit Road in Avon, as well as the EM Hospital Facility itself. Now, that, he was on the board making these decisions. He is part of making all this healthcare system that we all use in this area. I don't know who else has done that, when you collect it and lump it all together, all these other things that he's contributed, he's made. And after each new project was completed, the Board members and spouses were invited to tour the new facility before it was opened for use. And Judge Howard was a part of this decision-making board that produced such a great healthcare system in Lorain County, not in Elyria, in Lorain County. The Board hired some of the best physicians in the country. For one, Dr. Rodney Link, the black eye surgeon that we have here. He was touted to be one of the best eye surgeons in the country, but he was practicing in Texas. And the Board voted to try to hire him. Judge Howard was hands-on in getting him and his family here. And they situate here in Lorain County, they live in Amherst. And when I say hands-on, I'll get a little bit personal and say that when they got him here and his family, they took an apartment in Cleveland. We loaned them a television so the kids would have two children, so the kids would have TV to look at. We did everything to encourage them to take it here. And my daughter, one of my daughters, who had been teaching up at the high school, took, talked to his wife and talked to her about the school system, showed her around the city. My daughter's two children, babysat their two children, so they would be free to go around and look at housing and do all that. And my daughter, Sam, she may get mad at me because she doesn't like to talk about her business. But Sam, who is downstairs, you work downstairs now, was on vacation in California. And Dr. Link said, well, he couldn't afford to hire, pay a lot of money for a receptionist. I said, well, my daughter is on vacation. And when she's coming back, she's not working right now. Maybe she will. And I called her, and she was a little bit upset. But I said, well, if you don't want to, you know, I'll pay you away to go back. So she came, and she was Dr. Link's receptionist until she got married and moved to Cleveland. That was hands-on. To get that one here. And right now, Dr. Link and his family, his wife taught at the college. She was also, along with Janine Donaldson, co-chaired that festival in Lorain that they have every year. And I'm just saying, you know, the kind of things that has snowballed from John Howard's efforts. And John Howard also was a charter member and president of the Gentry Club, which was comprised of about twenty, sixteen to twenty men from Lorain, Oberlin, and Elyria, who dug in their own pockets to defray the expenses of hiring bands, renting Melody Grove and Holiday Inn and so forth, and giving invitations to people of color because we were excluded from decent public places. And he did that for years. And he did that for years. I think Dr. Anderson is the only living charter member of that group. But, and as soon as some of the doors opened to block, then they changed their mission of having decent place to take their wives and their friends, and they started having golf outings and things that people had to pay for in order to raise funds to make scholarships When we first came here, maybe I don't even need to go back that far, but I will say this much. You had no employment for blacks in businesses where, like the electric company and the gas company places where we spent our dollars. We couldn't even work there. So John walked from business to business, trying to open doors for minorities and to assist people in securing jobs, especially where they paid taxes and spent their money. Now, John himself worked here, and he spent his money here. When I sat down in that office here recently and looked at all these buildings downtown, John had business in every one of them. And he made me do, do my business there. I was still doing my business in Cleveland. And he said, this is where he earned his money and he wanted to spend it here. So I had to, I had to do my thing down here on the square also. And two other things I'd like to, and things like that, is when I mentioned John Howard being the, the local Martin Luther King. He's done all the same things that all the others that worked for justice has done. He did most of it in a quiet, mild-mannered way, and when they didn't allow him to sit in the, in the restaurant here in Elyria, and when they didn't allow him to go to the golf course, of course, with his friends, he will say, well, we'll go to court about it. So he did have that medium. So he was one up on Martin Luther King in that respect, because he could do it a different I went too far with that one and forgot to say, the very next thing is on the tip of my tongue. Okay, so I'll skip that then and go on to the Cancer Society. Most of us, somewhere along the way, if we don't, if we aren't touched by it, someone we know or our families have been, or will be. And John was on that board for years and years and years. Not only did he sit in meetings, he personally took part in whatever the drives were to earn the money for the Cancer Society, whether it be out at St. Jude's, judging some sports race, or whatever it would be. He was in there, hand and foot. He was a foot soldier for anything that he belonged to. And I know, because I was there. He didn't want me to work. He said he did not want a career woman for a wife, so I guess he must've wanted me at his beck and call. And called me, he did, because I was with him in most things that he did. And also the Red Cross. And I, I'm not going into all the things he did, but I think that I've given you enough when I tell you about the things that, I wanted to be specific, in what Judge Howard did for this county. And I would not be, I won't rest. And I have a lot of people behind me that feel the same way I do about it. I just cannot, and I don't wanna settle for grouping him along with some other people like that, because he's head and shoulders above everybody else. And that's why, when I was here one time before, and I didn't go into details about things, but that's why I told you, I'd like to see his name placed up high. I was sitting in the office where my daughter is, and my, my husband was, and I was sitting there, I didn't even know that was the Justice Center Building. And after going through all those buildings, what went on, and John living his life down there, it wouldn't be long, if you sat there long enough, you'd see him going there from one place to another. But I sat there and I said that his name ought to be right up there on that building, so that when you drive by, you could see his name. There are so many lives that he has touched in this community, this county, this city, that I think that it ought, he ought to be, just like he stood out with his life, helping people, his name ought to stand out where you can see it without having to go into the door where he too see it. And I don't think that his name should be grouped and lumped with anyone else's, because I don't know anyone else that has the credentials that he has when it comes to helping and making life better for people in this county, this city, and this state. Governor of Indiana saw fit to give him the highest honor he ever gave anybody, including the President of the United States, which is called the Sagamore of the Wabash. And that was for his achievement, I'm sure, as becoming President of the Bar. And Indiana was a part of that eight-state Midwest Conference, which John had to host one year. So with that, I know I've missed something. I didn't intend to just talk about everything, but there were some things that I wanted to make sure and make clear, specifically so that you would know where I'm coming from. You might say, oh, she wants to build up there. It's personal. Do you know, when John died, I thought that was the end. That was closing the door on that chapter. And if it had not been for the Washington Post newspaper, that prestigious paper in Washington DC, if it had not been them, for them calling me to interview me, and they came here, and I put them off for a spell, and I finally agreed to meet the guy at the Holiday Inn, and he wanted to know about, it was the fortieth year for the March on Washington, and he wanted to know what my thoughts were about it today. And I said, forty years ago, I'm lucky to remember two days ago, you know, and how I was at that time, too, when he came. I mean, it wasn't the best time for me, it still isn't, because John is being kept alive a lot by people. You have no idea of the people that approached me that I don't even know, and tell me what my husband did to change their life. Anyway, if it hadn't been for this guy coming and interviewing me, and he, after we finished, he says, you know, I know a lot more about you than you think. He says, I've been here, and I, before calling you, and I researched, and I found out a lot of things about your husband. He says, are you interested in writing a book? And would you take, like to take some speaking engagements? I almost crawled under the chair, you know, but after some time, after being in that building and looking out, he jolted my memory about things, I began to kind of stand up and come out of hiding a little bit. I told John that if he passed before me, John took such good care of himself, I always said that he'd be here until the last dog died, because he was in real good physical condition. But, and I told him also, that if you die before me, I'm going to, for your funeral, I'm going to hire a horse-drawn carriage and do the casson thing, the casson, whatever they call that thing, with his body, and go, walk all this, up Washington Avenue from wherever you live, past the YMCA where he spent a lot of time, he was on the board there, too, he couldn't even go there when he was a kid. And on down Depot Street, because Friday evening, that's where the lawyers, the judges, and the people from downtown stopped in there. I was gonna take him around that corner, on up East Avenue to, to Broad Street, and around, round the square where he spent his life, walking the streets for justice and going into the legal buildings, halls for justice. And I told him, this is what I was going to do, if he passed before me. But it was such a shock when he passed, I couldn't even think of anything like that. I couldn't even think, you know what I mean, it just really did me in, so I didn't do it. And I wish that I had. Right now, I may decide to have a memorial service and do, I don't know what I might do. Anyway, thanks for listening and giving us this time, and I hope that you will consider, and if you don't reconsider, well, well, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Gladys. And I personally think you ought to think twice about speaking tours and a book. Great idea.
You have, yeah, you have, now, you have some idea about how old I am.
I have not a clue. Not a clue.
Oh, okay. Now, if I get this knee operated on, maybe I'll take my life.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Pastor Crowleton, shoe made of Asbury United Methodist Church here in Elyria. And I would just like to say that I believe that it is a sad day in Lorain County today. It's a sad day because, you know, we have Judge John A. Howard, who had spent fifty, at least fifty years of his life committed to Lorain County, and you know, it saddens me, because we could spend three hours talking about sewer, and we couldn't even get a second to talk about a man who has committed fifty years of his life to Lorain County. You know, it's not just about that he was the judge of Elyria Municipal Court, it's that he impacted, he grew up on the south side of Elyria. And we always talk about, you know, people needing to pull themselves up by their bootstraps to, to work and to accomplish things. And here's somebody accomplishes something, and here, you know, the city of Elyria has, has decided to, for the next thirty days, to have a dragnet, if you will, for the south side of Elyria, to clean up the south side of Elyria. Yet, we don't want to set on high someone who came out of that same community and did the things that Mrs. Howard has lifted up, that he has done, not just for city of Elyria, not just for the county of Lorain, not just even for the state of Ohio, but he impacted this region of the United States. And, and it saddens me that the Commissioners wouldn't even give it a second, so that you could have public discussion here, but yet and still, you could talk about sewers for three hours, for three hours. And yet and still, you wouldn't even give a second, somebody come up and second it to give consideration for this. It saddens me, and it saddens many members that sit on the Judge John A. Howard Memorial Committee. And I just hope, I just pray that you will find it somewhere in your hearts to reconsider this matter. But for now, I, as a resident of the county of Lorain, sit here sadly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Pastor.
Good morning. My name is Carolina Dunlap, and I, I know a lot about Judge Howard. I was really young, I used to go to his courtroom and different courtrooms, just to see if I wanted to be an attorney. Not a judge, just to be an attorney, and I watched judges. And one day, Judge Howard said to me, young lady, why are you in my courtroom all the time? I says, well, you know, I have eight children, and I says, I, I wanna be an educator or a judge. I turned, I just can't make up my mind. So he took me to his chambers one day, and he says, you know, you already have eight children, you're not gonna have anymore. I said, oh, no, eight is enough. But I did wanna do something to let my children know, this is the way to go. You have to do something with your life, and to do something, I had to show that I was doing something. My husband worked at US Steel, and he talked to me for about an hour. And he gave me all kinds of directions. I went into education, I graduated from Lorain County Community College, and it was just an awesome day for me, because I did it in two years. And went on to Cleveland State, at the time, you know, we didn't have all the other colleges at Lorain County. And I had to catch a bus, and I says, this is ridiculous, five o'clock in the morning, catching a bus, going to Cleveland? But it was something I wanted to do, so I called Judge Howard one day, made an appointment, went to see him. He says, Carolina, he says, keep on going. He says, this is your dream. He says, nothing comes easy, especially to us of color. And without talking to him, he might have been a philosopher or whatever, but he helped me, and he helped a lot of people in Lorain County. And today, I feel real strong about people seeing his name high, because if he helped me, I know he helped others who aren't here or can't be here. And I'm doing very well, my family's doing very well. And without people like Judge Howard, I wouldn't have gotten there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Meljorie Lee. I knew Judge Howard, and I was past president of National Cancer Negro Women. A lot of times Judge Howard would come forward, if we need information or anything, he would tell us about it. And Judge Howard was beautiful. I mean, he walked around saying nothing, had his beautiful smile on. So I, I do hope that the Commissioner will consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Meljorie. Sherman Jones?
Boy, it's something to get called out there. Good morning, my name is Sherman Jones. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for all the people who have come. You know, as we market our brand of democracy around the world, and we bring it to people who may not have an idea of what true democracy really is, it's good to see that it's still active and alive here at home, as we are able to come forward and share and have discussion on matters such as these. And I'd like to thank the Commissioners, thank everybody in attendance for that. When you ask and you talk about Judge John Howard as an individual, there are many things that can be said, none more eloquently than what Mrs. Howard spoke, and I thank her. I had the opportunity of working with him and seeing him on a day-to-day basis be able to do the things that he was able to do and inspire the people. This is not about the individual as much as about what the individual stood for. And adding the name of John A. Howard on any building, but in particular, a county justice center, we're talking about Lorain County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, not just about the individual accomplishments. Judge Howard came through and acted in dignity and civility at a time when our county and much of the country was socially fragmented. We were at a crossroads, looking to see what direction we were going to go. Judge Howard, in his own quiet, dignified, strong way, came through and helped, not individually-led, but helped and was a leader in moving our county forward out of that time and into a time where diversity and inclusion is championed here in the county. We have great institutions like Oberlin College and Lorain County Community College, such employers as the Methodist Village, and also the EMH Regional Health Center and Community Partners, and this body, Lorain County Commissioners, and the Lorain County System here, where diversity is very important. As I sit and look at the Commissioners as they stand, diversity is one of the first things that you see. Judge Howard came through at a time when diversity was not on the forefront, and he helped move it forward, and I dare say that we have all advanced, because Judge Howard came through and was able to do the things that he's able to do. The mark of a strong person is what he may inspire others to do. He or she may inspire other people to do. When you listen to people talk about John Howard, they talk about the inspiration that he brought forth, that they were able to go on and do some things that they may not have thought possible, because they saw, A, his strong, quiet, dignified way of doing things, and his own personal encouragement. Putting John Howard's name on a building would be a sign to all that Lorain County continues to be committed to diversity and inclusion, and is something that we are willing to stand tall- willing to stand tall and let others know, that when they come to Lorraine County, they're coming to a county that's moving forward. I thank everybody for this opportunity. I thank the Commissioners, and I'm glad to be a part of this process.
Thank you very much. David Ashenhurst, are you waiting to speak?
I am, but not on this issue, so I just.
I appreciate that, sir. Kind of figured that out.
Good morning to the Commissioners, to all who are gathered here. I'm Dr. Kevin Dudley, the pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church in Oberlin. Just wanted to say a word of support for this issue that is before you. I think it can be and is such a wonderful opportunity to make an institutional statement of justice. And on behalf of the citizens, particularly the African-American citizens in Oberlin and in Lorraine County, it would be a tragedy not to recognize this in a serious way. I cannot duplicate all that has been said. It has been said eloquently, and some wonderful points have been made as to why this should be memorialized on the Justice Center Building. The greater question is, you know, why not? And that is what occurs to me as I listen to all of the statements that have been made. What objections would anybody have for not making the statement on this building? Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Doctor. David?
Good morning, Commissioners. I somewhat apologize for following this, but I didn't want to be in the middle of it, so it was either be out in front of it, which I didn't do, and so it is winding it up. Three brief things, or two brief and one slightly longer. First of all, Commissioner Blair, I want to emphasize for everyone that that Black River rap report is an important document. Those, the fish, the brown bullhead doesn't look terribly appetizing in 2004, but compared to the tumors in 1992. If you like brown bullhead catfish, that is a sign that the river is getting cleaned up, and there's a lot of important information in that report about what's going on at the Black River. The second thing is very short, and just a personal thing about Judge Howard. I was privileged to meet him for three years. I didn't know his name, because I would go to the Asbury United Methodist Church, and everybody just called him Judge. So I wasn't aware of who he was until I'd known him for several years. And the third thing is my appreciation for an opportunity to make a little commercial for a bus ride 40 years after the bus rides that took people to Washington to the march in August of 1964. In August of 2004, the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center is opening in Cincinnati. And there were articles in both The Plain Dealer and The New York Times this past weekend. Some of those questions there are, why Cincinnati? And that's a good question, but that's part of the irony of the Underground Railroad and the kind of community Cincinnati is, or isn't, or wants to be, or has trouble being at times in terms of being a community of tolerance. But Spencer Crew has characterized that as a museum of conscience, and that's an interesting thing to have. That National Underground Railroad Freedom Center is having its grand opening and dedication exercises on Monday, August 23rd. There is on the books and starting to rise down in Oberlin, an Underground Railroad Center there. As the Commissioners know, and this you'll hear about several times over the next several years, because there's about a million dollars of federal money that's already been committed to the redevelopment of that site as a multimodal transportation center and an Underground Railroad Center. An organization called the Friends of Oberlin Underground Railroad Center is taking a bus, or two, or three, down to Cincinnati, leaving it sometime after nine in the morning on Monday, August 23rd, and getting back at about two in the morning. The Oberlin Inn will keep you for $29 if you want to stay the night there and not work your way home. Tickets for that are $60. I am addressing a copy of this to the Commissioners via the clerk as well, so that it'll appear on the correspondence list at the next meeting. But we do have, it is $60 a person. I hope, for those who would be willing to miss Kenny Rogers at the county fair, I'm sorry, it's when the county fair is opening, but we didn't pick the day that they're doing this down in Cincinnati. But for people who are interested or developing an interest in the Oberlin Underground Railroad Center, I hope you will consider joining us in Cincinnati and joining us on the journey down. We're looking forward to something like a barbecue and soul food lunch near Wilmington, Ohio, on the way down. There's a continental breakfast and a tee-shirt that you'll get just for coming along. You can call Sharon Pearson at Oberlin City Hall at 775-7217. And we do have an email address now. It's fourcenter, F-O-U-R-center@lycos.com. And as I say, I would appreciate it if this would just, next week, appear in the calendar of correspondence as well, so you can repeat it, even though you waive the meeting. Sometimes the clerk puts in some details about what's in the flyer. And we'd love to have anyone who can miss that day of the county fair and miss Kenny Rogers come with us down to Cincinnati. I would like to think, were Judge Howard alive, that he would be accompanying us on that trip.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Please, come to the microphone.
While she's coming up there, just let me say, that was James Taylor of the J, what? WJTV radio station here in Elyria. But he's in Kansas City, and he couldn't make it here this morning. But I'm just saying, I get all kinds of calls. So that was from him now, because he knew that this.
Thank you, Gladys.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sandra Steen, and I'm a resident of Lorraine County. For the past 10 years, I have lived here in Lorraine County, and I have served for the Lorraine County Domestic Relations Corps as a probation officer, along with a couple of nonprofit organizations. And since I've lived here, I've heard nothing but great things about Judge Howard. And for the past couple of weeks, since this issue has been raised, we've heard from Commissioner David Moore as to his reasoning for why he would support or oppose this issue. But we have not heard from the other two Commissioners. And I was just curious to know, what are your ration, what are your reasons for supporting it or opposing this issue?
I did write to the committee. It appears, and I sent a copy to the clerk, it appears here under item number five on our agenda today. It was a one-page letter.
Okay, thank you.
Millie Wade called me from Alabama University. She's down there with the Martin Luther King thing and their family reunion and stuff. And she said she was sorry she couldn't be here, but she had heard from you.
Thank you, Gladys. No, ma'am.
Commissioners, I'm here, I was employed by you into the Lorraine County Nursing Home, Golden Acres.
Your name, please.
My name's Mary Monax.
Thank you.
And it seems that they decided to terminate my employment there. I was there for two years. I gave them no trouble. I had no problem with them. They sent a letter to me in the mail stating, because I was sick, I got points against me, and they terminated me. And all I'm here for is to see if I could get my job back. They don't, I've talked to Bill Glowski, can't pronounce his name, I'm sorry, but he keeps putting me off. I've tried with the union. The union has done the same thing. So I decided to come here to see what I could do, to see how you could help me to get my job back. I mean, I didn't ask to be sick. I didn't ask for what happened to me to happen, but they seem to not really care.
Commissioners, we're going to executive session. I'll inform you of the facts, the situation therein.
Apparently, you'll be one of the items we'll be talking about in executive session. Thank you for coming, Mary.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I move the board going to executive session for the personnel items as outlined and for the pending litigation outlined by Mr. Ennis.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held 30